Just come up with me. Yeah, and Christina is on her way, but I don't know. No. He's on vacation.
Okay, before we begin the regular meeting, I have a report to make. And that is that the town council met this afternoon at a special closed session meeting. And it was a conference with labor negotiators. We have nothing to report out. It's a lovely day in Maraga, and I'm happy to call to order this Town of Maraga Town Council meeting for Wednesday, June 25th, 2025. It's 5:30 PM. Roll call. Let the record show that all town council members are present. And now we go to Pledge of Allegiance. Carrie, would you lead us in the pledge tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, presentations. We have a couple of presentations tonight. It's our honor to address the Pollinator, the National Pollinator Week. And we have a proclamation. Do we have anyone representing the pollinators with us tonight? It doesn't look like it. So would anyone like to make any remarks ahead of time before we read the proclamation? Maybe we'll do that afterwards. I'll start this off. This is a proclamation declaring June 16th to 22nd as National Pollinator Week. Whereas the Town of Maraga is home to many native wildlife and pollinator species such as birds, bees, and insects, which keep our environment healthy and biodiverse and...
Whereas the Town of Maraga recognizes that human health ultimately depends on well-functioning ecosystems and that biodiverse regions can better support food production, healthy soil and air quality, and can foster healthy connections between humans and wildlife and...
Whereas the Town of Maraga is working to build a healthy, sustainable, and wildlife-friendly community that brings the many benefits of nature to all corners of our community and...
Whereas pollinators play an important role in maintaining a healthy ecosystem. Local plant species, wildlife, and urban agriculture all depend on pollination from bees, butterflies, and other insects and...
Whereas in urban communities, pollinators play a crucial role in maintaining sustainable urban agriculture and local community gardens and...
Whereas pollinator species are in decline due to habitat loss and the use of pesticides, causing species like monarch butterfly to decline significantly in the past 25 years.
Whereas National Pollinator Week is a national initiative that offers opportunities to individuals and communities to help restore native habitat, support local pollinator species and...
Whereas the Town of Maraga will continue to support local, state, and national efforts to protect, restore, and conserve habitats for all pollinators, as well as foster a greater connection between residents and wildlife and...
Whereas Pollinator Week was recognized nationally from June 16th to 22nd, 2025, celebrating the essential role of pollinators, including monarch butterflies and...
Whereas the Town of Maraga continues to recognize the importance of pollinator habitat and environmental stewardship.
Now, therefore, I, Steve Wallachy, Mayor of the Town of Maraga, do hereby recognize the week of June 16th to the 22nd of 2025 as National Pollinator Week. And on this day, community, June 25th, 2025, we celebrate our continued commitment to creating a pollinator-friendly community and encourage all residents to participate in community activities that support and celebrate pollinator protection. Thank you. If we have no further comments on this, we'll move forward? Okay. So then that takes us to our second opportunity, and that is to take receipt and acknowledge a significant donation. And is there anyone here for providing that donation? Craig, come on up.
Hello, everybody. I'm Rose Aminas. I'm one of the board members for the Maraga Community Foundation. Along with me is Rob Pearson, another one of our Board of Directors. So we're here today to present a donation to the town that will be used. I think it's already in progress for a sidewalk, a crosswalk improvement at Reem and Chalda Way, which we hope will provide safer and easier access to the painted rock trailhead, which starts right at the end of the crosswalk. So before I do that, before I actually present the donation, just wanted to thank a few people, thank our individual donors, of which there are many. Some of them are sitting right in front of me right now. So I wanted to make sure to thank them because they make the fundraising and then the initial actual donation to the town, of course possible. Also wanted to thank Supervisor Candace Anderson and the Livable Communities Trust for making a significant commitment to donate $25,000 to this project. I'm now joined by Christina Poke, another member of our Board of Directors. So going on with who we're thanking. Also want to really thank the town staff for making this happen very quickly and actually getting at least part of the work done while other projects were going on in the town. So it kind of worked out with the timing so that kind of made it more efficient. I just drove by there. The crosswalk is there, and the pad on the other side by the trailhead is already done. So thank you to the town staff for making this happen very quickly. And unless either of you have anything else to say, then I will present a check from MCF to the town for $55,000. And this is a partial donation on the total committed donation of $80,000. So I think I will hand this, if that's okay, to someone. Okay.
Row, Rob, and everybody from the Maraga Community Foundation, thank you so much. You have consistently supported the town in some of these unique projects that would otherwise be a real challenge to fund. And you really walk the talk as community members, and I really commend you. Any other comments?
I would just like to second that and say that as a former board member of that organization, I know how hard you work and the work that you do. And I'm proud of the continuing partnership that MCS has with the town, and I look forward to continuing that strong partnership. Thank you.
Yes, Carrie.
I thank you as well. I believe I donated $500 to this effort. So thank you for continuing on the path to improving our community. I was also the former vice president. So as was said before, thank you so much for all the efforts you're doing to improve Maraga.
Anyone else? Good.
Thank you.
Should we get a photograph? Yes, we should. This is a very significant donation, by the way.
What's that? Yeah, sir.
Yeah. Oh, well, yes. Well, are there any other members of the public who wish to comment? They just left. You know, I fully intended to do that, but then they... Sorry. Okay. Bring that public back. That brings us on to item number four, which is public communication. This is time reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the town council on items that are not on this agenda. You will have up to three minutes to make your comment. The council cannot discuss details or vote on items not on the agenda. If necessary, the staff will be requested to address an action thereafter. Any comments? I don't see any hands. So we're going on to item number five, which is adoption of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? I see none. It passes unanimously. So now we move on to the consent agenda. And this is consideration of consent items removed for discussion. Are there any items that people wish to, that town council members wish to pull on tonight's?
Can we pull 6.4? It would just be good to hear publicly the discussion on this?
Sure. Anything, any others? So what we're pulling is the item 6.4, which is to authorize the mayor to sign letters to both Senator Tim Grayson and Assembly Member Rebecca Bauer-Khan on behalf of the town council opposing Senate Bill 79, which is a land bill. So then the remaining ones are approval of minutes, waive the second reading on to adoption of an ordinance, and appointing myself to the second seat on the Recycle Smart Board. Is there any public? There is no public. I see no public. So participation or...
There's no public comment, but I wanted to add that also on consent is 6.5, which is adopting the resolutions or the memorandum of understanding for Town in Maraga employees, bargaining units.
Was it moved, or are we looking for a motion?
No, I just wanted to make...
I just wanted to make sure that we covered it. So is there a motion to approve consent items 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, and 6.5?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition or abstentions? I hear none. So 6.4. Carrie, are there specific things you want to address?
So my understanding of this bill is that it does not, what this bill is, is about allowing for density development near transit hubs in, as are defined by the bill. I just want to be clear, this bill does not impact Maraga, the Town of Maraga, and that our position on this bill is more in support of our neighboring jurisdictions than it would impact. Is that accurate?
And you asking me the question?
Yeah.
Sure. I agree with you, but I also note that this is a bill that has garnered a whole lot of visibility, and the League of California Cities, or Cal Cities, strongly opposes it also. And so that's the reasons why we're proposing this. Other comments?
In general, I mean, it really, even though it doesn't directly affect Maraga, it does affect important local control of jurisdictions with respect to especially housing, a very important issue.
Scott, would you like to comment on this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, correct. Maraga was asked to weigh in. A resident, I believe, in Arinda asked the mayor, I think it was, that or a communication. And previously, the mayor did, when we were in between meetings, sign a letter to Senator Weiner, the author of the bill, when it was earlier going through the Senate. It's gone through the Senate. There's now a series of steps in the assembly, and if that goes pretty rapidly, you could get to the governor in July, actually. So from a Maraga perspective, as the mayor indicated, it's not that it impacts Maraga directly. It does impact Arinda and Lafayette. So what it will allow, there's a lot of details here, but transit authorities such as BART will have greater control and say over development on property they own or lease that's near a station. And in the case of Lafayette and Arinda, what this really means is greater density, this passes, greater density can be built for housing, commercial, office, industrial, whatever BART would want within the parameters of this bill, which would go beyond what is allowed in Lafayette and Arinda's general plan, housing element, et cetera, and beyond their design standards. So from a Maraga perspective, in cities and towns in general, whether you're for more dense housing or not, it usurps our authority and our control, which would mean that our general plans and housing elements are irrelevant. And if it's allowed for this, this is just one more step, and then something else will happen and will further take away local control. Sorry for the lengthy explanation, but this is another example of the states taking away local control. We have all these meetings and hearings in council chambers such as this, and the residents come, and then you ultimately approve something. This makes it so that that doesn't matter anymore. So that's why when it was brought to our attention and staff, we did the research, and we concur the recommendation should be opposed. For the record, though, there are those that support this, and we put that in the packet that was brought to our attention today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I see no members of the public. So would you like to make a motion?
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the letters. One point that I, on this motion, though, are we, I'm sorry, interrupt my motion with a question. Are we CCing the policy committees of jurisdiction to ensure that our opposition's included in the floor analysis?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes. It'll go into the league port hole. But the main request here was to make sure our Assembly Member, sorry, our Assembly Member and our state senator, it's RBK and Senator Grayson, that they're aware of our official position. We will also share with the league, I've already talked to the league.
Okay.
They know this is coming.
Got it.
So it'll go into the appropriate port holes. There's, I had it written down. I didn't bring it with me. There's a series of steps in the assembly. So what they do is they tally up. How many yes, how many no. So by the way, just to be clear, it doesn't matter if all five of you sign the letter or just one. Ideally, have the mayor sign on behalf of you. So it'll go in the record, the Town of Maraga opposed.
Got it. So the league will handle schlepping this around through the process because as a former legislative staffer, unless it's delivered at each step, then you're not, you're only opposing on one step, not all of them.
That's correct. And the league has a port hole that makes, and in addition to that, our representative, Sam, she changed her last name.
She did.
But I've already talked to her, and I will personally follow up with her. Again, we will see her tomorrow at the event, the East Bay event, and I'll tell her, hey, they passed this thing. Make sure Maraga's voice is heard all the way through.
Sure. So I move to authorize the mayor to sign letters to both Tim Grayson and Assembly Member Rebecca Bauer-Khan on behalf of the town council opposing Senate Bill 79, Weiner shifting land use authority from cities and towns to transit agencies.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's been passed, seconded, and passed unanimously. Okay, that takes us on to announcements and reports on activities. So the first item is council member reports. Graham, would you like to start?
Yeah, nothing directly to report from the past series of weeks, but am looking forward to joining our fellow council members in the East Bay City Pack Cornhole Tournament tomorrow. And for the record, we have practiced, we are prepared, and hopefully we will do Maraga proud.
Thank you.
Remember, the goal is not about winning or losing, just don't come in last place.
Absolutely.
I don't agree with that.
We have some competitive players on our team, so I think we will do better than not last place.
It's for the city managers, you don't want your city to be in last place. That's all I'm going to say.
Well, my announcement is not quite as fun. But on Friday, last Friday, I attended as Maraga's delegate, the ABAG, Association of Bay Area Governments General Assembly. It was an interesting day and a long day. There were two business items that took place in the morning. The first was approving the operating budget for '25-'26. The main takeaway from that was that, as has been the case for some time, a great percentage of that budget goes to paying unfunded pension liabilities. And the organization is looking at ways to pay that liability, perhaps in chunks. So they're examining a lot of ways to look at that problem. Then there were also some procedural amendments to the bylaws, none of which is particularly interesting, except for one, which of note, which was to provide greater transparency in voting. There used to be a secret ballot to vote for the president, or has been until now, the president and vice president of the executive committee, and they're doing away with that. We then had some interesting speakers, and I have a lot of material from that, if any of you are interested in seeing that material.
Thank you very much. Good. Brian? Carrie?
Yes. So I believe our last council meeting was 6:11. So from then, on 6:13, I participated in the California League of Cities Transportation Committee, where we received a presentation from the California Transportation Commission on the RMRA program, which annually allocates $1.2 billion from SB 1 for road projects such as deferred maintenance, road rehabilitation, bike lanes, traffic control, storm drains, and emergency evacuation routes. Funds can be used for planning, design, and construction. The application deadline is July 1st, with the late application deadline of September 1st. My understanding is that Maraga currently is, has applications in for the receipt of $400,000 in funds, but could be applying for more. Other projects that could fit the criteria would be Maraga Way's evacuation lane and possibly the evacuation lane for Bullinger Canyon, should the council choose to pursue that. I believe that what's required in order for projects to apply for this program is that the council pass a resolution indicating that they are the priority projects. Also, on 6:13, I was able to, I was happy to host a practice session for Maraga's team for the League of Cities Cornhole thing that will be taking place tomorrow. Thank you to those council members that were able to attend. On 6:17, I participated from Chicago in my hotel room on a meeting that I called for between St. Mary's, the Contra Costa County Transportation Agency, County Connection, and Maraga to discuss options for improving transit frequency and last mile service for all of La Merinda, but for Maraga specifically. On 6:18, I attended the GAD meeting with the mayor and also Council Member Malio, where we discussed, one, agendizing a discussion for the GAD on the appropriate place for managing the GAD board, should it continue to be a private company, or should, could town staff do that, as is done in San Ramon and in the city of Clayton. In addition, we referred back to the town council an item regarding parking and recreation access for the trail on, I forget what the name of the road is, Fay Hill Road, which is over by the Bella Vista Development. On 6:21, I attended the Manetta Transportation Institute banquet at San Jose State and had the opportunity to interact with many in the Bay Area transportation community, and was able to advocate with members of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission for Contra Costa County with regards to the upcoming regional transportation measure. On 6:23, I participated the Bay Area Council Climate, Resilience, and Water Committee and was able to discuss the impacts of Zone Zero from a municipal perspective. Present were representatives from several insurance companies. On 6:24, I participated in a walkthrough of my neighborhood with the fire marshal for the new firewise community or neighborhood that I am proud to lead. Thank you to Mark and Steve and the fire marshal, and to my neighbors that were able to participate. On 6:26, I am looking forward, as mentioned, to participating in the League of Cities Cornhole Tournament. 6:27, for work, I'm attending the American Public Transportation Association High Speed Rail Seminar. And on the 29th through July 1st, I will be attending for work the APTA Rail Conference in San Francisco.
Okay. What I have to report is that I also participated in the GAD meeting of the 18th of June. And the GAD, for those not familiar with it who might be listening, is the Geological Hazard Assessment District, covers some of the land that is both adjacent to the Polish Colorado's properties and the John Muir Land Trust property. And it is, has a conservation easement, and the GAD is there to fund, manage the property, and fund repairs as necessary. And we have an annual meeting, and that's what we had on the 18th. And the GAD is being managed very well by the contractor. Then last night, I met with the mayors of Lafayette and Arinda. We do this periodically. Most of the meeting last night was spent on fire hardening, fire, wildfire risks, coordinating efforts between the three communities to develop a sort of a unified fire hardened community. And so there was a large number of areas that we discussed, and we have some action items from that. And then today, on the same subject, I met with Fire Chief Jeff Isaacs. And again, that was a very fruitful discussion. I also, just a quick note, in preparing to join Recycle Smart, I met with Dave Kruener, and he briefed me, helped bring me up to speed. He also provided materials that I reviewed. So hopefully I'll be ready for the big day on July 24th, when the new contract will be considered for selection. That's all I've got. Scott, do you have anything that you'd like to update at this moment?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at the end of the meeting, I'll talk about upcoming items. But I did want to plug now the July 4th events that are coming up as a reminder. That'll be next week. And carrying the, continuing the long tradition in Maraga, we will be doing the fireworks show for the La Merinda and greater area. So the festivities, if you want to participate in La Merinda stuff, early in the morning, Arinda will have their parade. Then starting at about 11 o'clock over at the Commons, we'll have a whole series of festivities with the different service clubs doing their thing, all kinds of things for young families, and concerts, and bounce houses, and all that stuff. And then there'll be the dog competition. Some of you will be judges, and so on. So it'll be a really super fun day. Live music, family activities, bounce houses, community... Live music, family activities, bounce houses, community booths, food vendors, et cetera. Fireworks, 9:30 PM. And again, we apologize upfront that portions of the road and around the country club will be closed, starting at 8:30, and will remain closed to about 10:30 PM. So there will, some people will be inconvenienced in the community. It'll take a while to move around, right before and after the fireworks. We apologize upfront for all the car alarms that go off, but it's all in the spirit of fun, right? And so, those who would like to contribute to help offset the cost of the fireworks, you can go on our website. We try not to beg for it, but we do appreciate the contributions. So that'll be cool. And everybody can go to our website to learn more. So that's the plug for that. There was some discussion about the GAD meeting and all that. Counsel for all five of you, our Parks and Rec Director, Public Works Director, myself, will work with the GAD staff, and we'll dissect the discussion, and we'll, we will, at some point, come back to counsel with some options and follow up to the best of our ability. I know there are differences of opinion here. We will balance those. But the main thing is, we have to make sure that the objectives of the GAD are being adhered to. And this gives us an opportunity. When I, I was a little surprised by the outcome. I was over at the MOFD Board meeting that night. I didn't know that there were gonna be fireworks, metaphorically.
There weren't fireworks, Scott.
Okay, well, I wasn't there, but it sounds like there were some items. But we will follow up, counsel, and we will get back to you. Okay? We, and we'll work with NGO.
Let's talk later, 'cause there was no action from the GAD meeting requesting action from the town.
Understood, but I need to make sure all of us, as your staff, with the town and with NGO, are on the same page.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe that's accurate. I believe that the motion that was made with regards to the recreation item specifically was that the management company refer back the item to the town, as the management company did not have appropriate information to be able to analyze it. And then if there was a need for it to go back to the GAD, that the town would then act on it. So there is an action for the town on that item. On the other item, it was to calendar, within this current year, a discussion on whether or not, who the appropriate management should be for the GAD.
I agree that there was a motion to hold a second, a second meeting. I think that, I'll look at the minutes, and we'll decide what the, whether the other motion, in fact, was, in fact, was it voted on? It voted on the meeting, we didn't, we're not gonna talk any further.
Right, 'cause, Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's not on the agenda, but...
It's not, this isn't a GAD meeting.
I know that.
Yeah, you know?
It's not a GAD meeting, and it's a separate public agency, and...
Yeah.
It's exactly right.
Okay. Just know, I hear all of you, and we will come back accordingly. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, okay. That concludes the town manager's comments. Thank you.
Good. That brings us on to the item eight, which is the public hearing. And item A is the proposed biannual 2025, 2026, and 2026, 2027, operating and capital improvement program budget for the hacienda de las Flores. Are you gonna, so, you wanna make an announcement?
I will be recusing myself and leaving the room, as my primary residence is within 500 feet of the property line for the hacienda de las Flores.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for the viewing public, so the budget, because of the conflict, it's in two components. We do one for the hacienda properties. You conclude that. The vice mayor can come back, and then we'll do the budget for the rest of the town, with all five of you present.
Scott, is there a...
Sorry, our CFO, Katie Bruner, will deliver the
Thank you.
proposed budget for the hacienda.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Katie Bruner, Administrative Services Director. And tonight, I will be presenting our fiscal year 2025 and 2026, and 2026 to 27, operating and capital budget for the hacienda de las Flores facility. So this evening, staff is recommending that town council approve resolutions before you approving the fiscal year 26 and 27 operating and capital budgets for the hacienda de las Flores, as well as the five-year capital improvement plan for the property. So the hacienda's operating budget is in the town's general fund. Revenues are estimated at about $391,000 in fiscal year 26, and $395,000 in fiscal year 27. Appropriations are proposed and recommended to be about $350,000 in fiscal year 26, and $364,000 in fiscal year 27. Hacienda revenues are primarily from the town's lease with Wedgewood weddings, but we also have revenue from town-hosted special events and facility rentals. Appropriations for the hacienda operating budget include proportions of recreation, the recreation manager and parks maintenance workers. Maintenance and services contracts that are specific for the hacienda property. This would include something like janitorial services, or special projects, maintenance projects, utilities for the facility, and then supplies and materials for maintenance and events that are specific to the hacienda property. The fiscal year 26 and 27 capital improvement budget for the hacienda includes three projects. The Laguna Creek Restoration Project Phase 2, that's a carryover from the current CIP budget. Replacement of the Pavilion Flagstone Staircase in fiscal year 26. And then replacement of the roof in fiscal year 27. The Laguna Creek Restoration is a grant-funded project, and then the staircase and roof replacement are funded by the town's asset replacement fund. And then other hacienda projects that are identified in the five-year capital improvement plan include repairs to the parking lot retaining wall, replacement of the trash enclosure, and replacement of the HVAC system. Currently, all those projects are identified for fiscal year 28, but as we get into the planning for that year, those may shift. So again, this evening, staff is recommending your council approve the resolutions adopting the fiscal year 25, 26, and 26, 27 operating budget for the hacienda de las Flores, as well as the fiscal year 25, 26, and 26, 27 capital improvement program, and five-year capital improvement plan for the hacienda. So that kind of concludes the presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Questions of staff? No questions of staff? Are there any comments from the public? I see no members of the public. Bring back, bring it back for deliberations? Any deliberations on this? We've seen this before? Ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2025, 26, and 2026, 27, biannual operating budget for the hacienda de las Flores as proposed. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's been passed unanimously with one abstention. Is it an abstention of council member? Yeah, it's been, okay. Nope, nope, not yet. Not yet, sorry. Okay, I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2025, 26, and 2026, 27, biannual capital budget and five-year capital improvement plan for the hacienda de las Flores as proposed. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously with an abstention of council member Hillary, Hilis, excuse me. So now you can...
He's, he can hear.
Okay. So, moving on to 8B. This is the proposed biannual fiscal year 2025, 26, and fiscal year 2026, 27, operating and capital improvement program budget and establishment of the fiscal year 2025, 26, annual appropriation limit. Scott, is there a presentation for this?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Katie Bruner will give you the presentation in a moment. I'd just like to make a couple introductory comments and for our newer council members. Just a reminder, this is one of the most significant policy documents that comes in front of you during the year. And if you look at it this way, as a municipal corporation, some of the key documents that you'll deal with, the budget is the spending plan. In many cities, they have an annual budget. We have a two-year budget with two one-year budgets. In California, local governments can only have an annual budget, but we do two, two years at one time. So this is the spending plan. And then, after the year is over, we do the financial report. We have an outside auditor comes in. So that is a snapshot, or how did we actually spend the money? So there's accountability on the front end and on the back end. And then during the year, your department heads are managing or implementing the budget, as it's been approved. And if we need adjustments, we'll come to you for adjustments. So even though the budget is done, it's not totally fixed. It is a flexible, livable, breathable document. So we encourage you to read through it, and the town manager budget message at the front, that's the most significant document. It's sort of like a state of the organization. It spells out for you and the community, what are the key issues? What are the key challenges? And just really what's going on in Moraga. All right? So with that said, this is a no-frills budget. We are very small and lean machine, and we're charged to deliver a variety of services. Katie will walk you through the general fund budget and some of the special revenue fund budgets. We do this to be in compliance with the town mission statement that you approved in February, your five broad goals for the overall organization, and your top 10 priorities. So those that you did in the spring, those are our guidelines when we prepare the budgets. The budget, as your spending plan, addresses all of that. Okay, so having said that, and I do wanna compliment, thank, and acknowledge the department heads for their incredible collaboration and teamwork. You're seeing them on their best behavior tonight, and it's been challenging along the way to get to a balanced budget. We appreciate the cooperation from the employees and the patience and understanding from our residents who always want more than we're able to deliver. This is a conservative, no-frills budget that's in front of you. So having said that, as your town manager, now I'm gonna turn it over to Katie. It's all yours.
All right, thank you, Scott. So again, Katie Bruner, Administrative Services Director, and I'll be walking you through the fiscal year 2025 to 26, and 26, 27, operating and capital budget. Before we get started, I would like to echo Scott's comments and extend my thanks to my fellow directors, as well as my staff in the Administrative Services Department, two of whom are here. We could not build this document and get this budget without the collaboration and hard work of everybody, so I really appreciate them. So this evening, staff is recommending that town council approve the resolutions approving the fiscal year 26 and 27 operating budget, the fiscal year 26 and 27 capital improvement program budget, as well as the five-year capital improvement plan, as well as establishing the fiscal year 26 annual appropriations limit. So how did we get here? We started internally in January with the budget development, but we formally kicked off the process with your town council in February with the review and adoption of an updated mission statement, town council goals and priorities. In March, staff came before both the Audit and Finance Committee and Town Council, presenting a 10-year general fund financial forecast, as well as updating the town's reserve policy. In April, town council held a public hearing for AB 2561, a new requirement with a report on town vacancies, recruitments, and retention. And then staff went to the Audit and Finance Committee in May with the first look at the proposed operating and capital budgets. Staff then incorporated AFC's feedback into their first look at the budget, town council's first look at the budget on May 14th. Two weeks ago, we were in front of you with a public hearing to adopt the master fee schedule, which does impact our revenues in this two-year budget. And then we are here tonight for final adoption of the recommended 26 and 27 operating and capital budgets. So total budget appropriations for all funds are recommended at $27.2 million in fiscal year 26. Of that $27.2 million, $13.3 million are appropriations within the general fund, which is the town's main operating fund. Fiscal year 26, 27 has total budget appropriations recommended at $30.3 million, and $13.8 million of that is within the general fund. And then our capital improvement budget is recommended at $24.3 million over both fiscal years. That includes 32 ongoing and new projects. The general fund is the town's main operating fund, and that's where most of our operating expenditures are budgeted in. So the general fund proposed budget is balanced in each fiscal year, with revenues and transfers in, equalling proposed appropriations and transfers out at approximately $13.3 million in fiscal year 26, and $13.8 million in fiscal year 27. The primary revenue source for the town's general fund is property tax, which is about 45% of general fund revenues. Department revenues are the second highest source of revenue, at about 23%, or it's about $3 million each year. Department revenues include lease revenue from town property, class and camp registration revenues, facility rentals, fees for direct services, permits, and planning revenues, as well as cost recovery for CIP projects. And then last, our sales tax and franchise fees are a close third and fourth place of our primary funding sources, each equating around 10% each of our general fund revenues. Recommended general fund appropriations, again, are about $13.3 million in fiscal year 26, and $13.8 million in fiscal year 27. This chart here shows recommended appropriations by department, as well as in comparison to the current budget year. Non-departmental expenditures include town-wide insurance premiums, as well as our CalPERS unfunded accrued liability costs, which I will note are set to increase by about 17% for between this current fiscal year and next fiscal year. And then, just another comment, is our police appropriations, police department appropriations are recommended to decrease in fiscal year 26 as a result of direct charging and direct budgeting eligible expenditures into non-general funds, special revenue funds. And then also the elimination of a vacant grant-funded police officer position. So of the general fund, salaries and benefits are about 72% of our general fund appropriations. This includes funding for 41 and 1/2 full-time equivalent, or FTE positions, as well as associated health benefits, retirement benefits, and ancillary benefits. This also includes our temporary staffing and associated costs. And this includes both our regular and UAL unfunded accrued liability pension costs. The town's operation and maintenance budget in the, in the general fund is about 27% of the general fund. And that includes everything that's not people. So that includes utilities, our insurance premiums, contractual services, such as our town attorney, lobbyist agreement, auditor services, janitorial services, any operational supplies, whether that's from office supplies, small equipment, or supplies for camps and classes, and then also software and technology costs. The capital budget is, again, $24.3 million over both fiscal years. This includes prior year project carryovers of about $8.8 million, so those are projects that are still ongoing. New appropriations of $6.8 million in fiscal year 26, and new appropriations of $8.7 million in fiscal year 27. There's a combination of, like I said previously, 32 ongoing and new projects. And funding sources for the capital budget are a wide variety of sources. They include Measure K, our town's special revenue funds, INLU developer fee funds, and as well as grants. Some specific major projects that are planned in the capital budget over the next two-year includes the Moraga and Canyon Road Complete Streets Project, the annual pavement rehabilitation and repair projects, rehabilitation of the Mahallen Ridge Slide, Corliss Drive and Canyon Road Culvert Rehabilitation, and the town facility energy reliability project. Specific project pages and documentations over all of the town's capital budget projects can be found beginning on page 71 of the draft budget book, which was included as a link to the agenda this evening. So other town funds include special revenue, excuse me, special revenue funds, impact fee funds. Specific budget appropriations for each fund can be found in the beginning of page 63 on the draft budget book. But generally, and primarily, the town uses our special revenue funds to fund capital projects. We have started to, as I mentioned earlier, direct charge those department operating expenditures that are eligible for special... We have started to, as I mentioned earlier, direct charge those department operating expenditures that are eligible for special revenue funds, which is primarily in the police department. These are some specific changes to the other funds recommended appropriations, and staff was before you in May. That includes the appropriation of $350,000 in the Palos Colorado's Fund for funding of the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. The awarding of contract is before your council later this evening. We are recommending increased transfers out to the general fund for the street maintenance operating budget out of the refuse vehicle impact fee fund. The lighting assessment district fund, we've increased appropriations for utility costs based on trends and historical usage. And then we've included $20,000 for the La Miranda Spirit Van in the LFFA Fund per council direction and approval of the LFFA Subcommittee. So town staffing, the budget again includes 41.5 FTE. We again have the reduction of a currently vacant grant-funded police officer position as that grant funding was not removed. And then two reclassifications of an administrative assistant to a senior administrative assistant in the town manager's office, and the reclassification of a lead maintenance worker to a parks maintenance supervisor to align with the reorganization of duties within our maintenance department. So and now for the GAN appropriation limit. So annually, the town must calculate our appropriation limit and make sure that we are within our appropriation limit. The town's applicable appropriations for fiscal year 26 are well below our GAN limit of 20 and a half minute, million. Our applicable appropriations are about $10 million. And I'd like to note, we've had your staff, your agenda has been amended to ensure that our calculation is, has been updated based on its population change and cost per capita cost. And that is verified by our auditor annually as part of our fiscal audit. So this evening, staff's recommending town council approve the resolutions approving the fiscal year 26 and 27 operating budget, approving the fiscal year 26 and 27 capital improvement budget and five-year capital improvement plan, and establishing the fiscal year 26 annual appropriations limit. And that concludes my presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Questions by members of the town council? Again, this is something we have reviewed previously. So are there any members of the public that have any questions or statements on this? I see no hands. So that brings us back to the town council for deliberations. Are there any deliberations on this or comments?
Yes, of course, Carrie.
I just want to thank staff for the hard work that it took to get this document together. This is a pretty substantial document. And I know that coming in and being sure when you are as lean as we are, I went back and looked at these numbers and just wanted to be sure that, wait, that's it? It is it, but being able to run all of this on such a lean budget, I really commend all of you that had a hand in prepping the budget. Thank you so much for your efforts.
Lisa?
And I would also like to thank you, I think on behalf of all of us, for your concise and cogent guidance on getting us through this budget process.
Thank you. Graham.
I ditto all those comments and also really appreciate the transition over the last few years to a two-year budget.
I agree with.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say as a new town council member, it's been quite the education and exercise going from aligning missions and goals to seeing such a comprehensive document here. So thank you for being a part of the process.
And I would I would add that I've been through this now, I think, six times. And I'd say that this was the smoothest budget to go through, easiest for me to vote for. And I commend and likewise the fact that we, okay, so it's maybe five times because we did last, last budget was a two-year budget. But I also like the two-year approach. All the advantages of that. Okay, if there are no further comments, ready for motions? Unless someone else has, is ready for that, I will make those motions. I move approval to adopt the fiscal year 2025, 26 and 26, 27 biannual operating budget as proposed. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed or abstentions, there are none. Moves, it passes unanimously. Then we move on to adopting. I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2025, 26 and 2026, 27 biannual capital budget and five-year capital improvement plan as proposed. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Moves, abstentions or nays, I see none. Moves, it's passed unanimously. Then we have one more. I move that we establish the annual GAN appropriations limit for the fiscal year 2025, 26 as proposed. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
Just to clarify, as proposed means the amended version submitted by staff, is that correct?
Correct. Thank you for that.
Second.
It's been seconded, moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those are abstentions, there are none. Moves unanimously, it's passed unanimously. Thank you very much. That's a big milestone.
Thank you.
Let's see where we are. Okay, this brings us on to item HC of the public hearings. And that is authorization to levy assessments for Assessment District 1979-1 Town of Moraga Street Lighting for the fiscal year 2025, 26. Is there a presentation for this, Scott?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Sean Napp, your Public Works Director. Tonight, the request is to hold an open public hearing to allow any interested parties to speak on behalf of the item, which we are asking to levy property tax to pay for our street lighting district. So there is, you know, of course, two recommendations. Of course, is to hold the meeting, the public hearing, and then if so choose, the council adopt the resolution, which sets the rate for the streetlight levy amount. The levy amount has not changed in many years, and it's been held at, I think it's $58 per residential unit. And again, we are keeping it at that cost. This has been brought to your attention through, I think, four meetings now. And so welcome any questions. I don't have any formal presentation from a PowerPoint, but we're here to open the official hearing and commence.
Are there any questions of staff by the town council? Carrie?
So my understanding, just from this coming before us multiple times in the past, is that the only properties in Moraga that are assessed this fee, which has no escalator, are those that were included in, or that were developed properties in 1979 when the district was established. Is that correct?
Since the adoption and the formation, we've added additional parcels as we've gone along, probably about 200 or more as we proceeded. Each new development that comes in to the town is requested to join the street lighting district. So we currently have about 68% of the parcels in the town, in the district, plus some additional parcels outside the district, which pay into the district for us to manage the streetlights.
So just to be clear, so 68% of the parcels within Moraga are in the district. Some number other than those pay in for participation but are not part of the district?
Well, I misspoke. They are in the district, but they're outside the town boundary. There's about 18 lights that are outside the town boundary in the district that do pay in to have those managed by the town.
So that additional 32% of developed properties within the town of Moraga, they do not pay into the district? And in order for them to be assessed, any level, the $58 or whatever, there would have to be a public vote to amend the district to include them?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? Well, just clarification, when we say a public vote, we're talking about the members of that community, right? That want to opt in? Or is that the entire public?
It depends on how they process it would be implemented. When individual parcels or parcels in a subdivision come into the district, those parcels that we'd like to participate are the ones voting on it. If you had a townwide initiative for some other way to restructure it, it would be a town, you know, they would be, of course, would be townwide, and there'd be other things being considered with that.
Right. Other questions? There are none. Public comment? Any comment from the public?
Mr. Mayor, since this is a public hearing, we need to open the public hearing and then accept any objections. If there's no objections, then our comments, then we would close the public hearing.
I hereby open the public hearing for any comments from the public. I see none, therefore I close the public hearing. Thank you for that reminder. Any deliberations? Yeah, Carrie.
So I will reiterate the comments that I've raised the last, this is now my third year, indicating that I believe that the lighting district, one, needs to be amended to include all developed parcels within the town of Moraga. Two, I believe that the drafting of the measure in 2010 was remiss in not including a CPI adjuster or some other factor to ensure that the, what was then $58 could be held constant, especially accounting for the hyperinflation we've experienced recently. And then third, that the district be amended to include a landscaping component. As I frequently point out, I am jealous of the traffic medians that I've seen at a lot of our neighboring communities. This is a key part of business and community development. I've heard it noted that Moraga, to some, looks sad when people come through, that the lack of the same type of meticulous landscaping that you can find in a traffic median in Danville or San Ramon is absent here in Moraga. I appreciate and am grateful for the work of the Moraga Garden Club in trying to bring it up, but there's only so much that volunteer efforts can do to ensure that we have a, the type of community that one would expect with an average property value of $2 million. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I would just like to add briefly that a number of residents have spoken with me about the landscaping component. And they feel the same way as Councilmember Hillis has expressed about the current traffic medians, especially with relation to the property values.
We have the option to request a future meeting. Okay? Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Scott, town manager? Sure, absolutely.
It's deja vu all over again. I appreciate the council members' landscape and lighting district envy of others. Like to remind you, a reference during the budget meeting was made to your, the goal-setting workshop you had in your top 10 priorities. Well, priority number two calls this issue out as part of the long-term financial strategic plan that staff needs to develop. And it's actually written in here that we are to look at the landscape and lighting fees. So it's on our to-do list. We will tackle it. And ultimately, if council concurs, and this is your desire to ensure appropriate street lighting throughout the town and landscape improvements along the major arteries, such as Ream Boulevard right out here, Moraga Road, Moraga Way, St. Mary's Road, Canyon and some others. We certainly and happily would put it together and be able to put it together for you and ultimately go to the voters, and then they get to decide. So we hear you loud and clear. Thank you for the reminder. But remember, this is my top 10 list. I carry it with me all the time. So understood. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I could respond to one thing, I missed replying to one of the comments or questions. We do have an escalator built into the fee. The town council would approve any escalation on a yearly basis through this meeting process. We, the staff has recommended not increasing at this time. We have the ability to go up to $90 and one cent for a residential charge. And that could be enacted tonight or by this vote. It's not what we're recommending, of course. We recommend in keeping it at $58 for a residential charge.
That's just for the lighting component?
Yes. Correct. This is for the lighting district. There's an escalator, an annual escalator. We have the ability, the town has the ability to increase that. With increasing it, we have to also document what the money is being used for. And it has to be within the parameters of the maintaining lighting district uses and services. And so if we were to add additional services outside our scope, then of course, we'd have to change the scope to utilize that revenue.
If I can ask a question, if we were to raise it even tonight, do you know how that money would be used consistent with the requirements of the lighting district?
The council in the past has pursued lighting upgrades, lighting studies. There was an analysis at one point with a master plan. Could we purchase all the lighting, you know, within the town? 80% of the town lights are owned and maintained through our revenue source by PG&E. And so there was a discussion, should we buy all those lights and they all become town lights? We could put things on those lights, you know, whether it's telecommunications, banners. We could have other uses for it if we controlled the facility. So in the past, there's been a lot of different initiatives that have been accomplished by raising the rates and using those revenues within the meanings of the description of the district.
Sure, just a second. Just confirming, not all residences in Moraga have streetlights, is that correct?
Correct. Many streets don't have streetlights, and many of those parcels we were mentioning that are not in the streetlight district do not have lights and do not have a benefit from that. All properties or parcels within the district pay a frontage percentage, which is on their street, and also a percentage coming from a benefit from our Arturo Street or other street lights within the district. And so if you wanted to bring in parcels that don't have streetlights, we, they could have a benefit portion, which was the whole entire town. Or if we installed streetlights, there's going to be a cost associated with that. And we'd have to use that from the revenues that we have currently to do that or raise additional revenues to bill lights in those streets that don't have them.
Thank you.
Apologies, I misread the staff report. So we've chosen not to increase the levy for 16 years. Have the costs been constant over 16 years?
The costs are increasing. We are eating into our revenues at this point for this year. I think to tune about $30,000, which, you know, we have a fairly robust, it's, we keep it about a little over $300,000 or more in, on a yearly basis because we have a fluctuation of costs. When the revenues come in, they come in through, you know, several times during the year, but we have to. you know, several times during the year, but we have to have money, of course, on hand to pay monthly fees for all the lecture use.
So if I'm to understand correctly, we have a healthy reserve, and we are eating into that reserve with no expectation that the costs will go the other way, right? So at some point, the reserves will go to zero, but we're far from that at this point.
That is correct.
Other question that I have is, I understand that St. Mary's had propositioned the town regarding whether or not we could contribute towards their lighting with the possibility of our, of the town being able to utilize their recreation fields if an investment was made as well. Would that be the type of thing that the lighting district funds could be used for, or St. Mary's not within the district?
I'd have to investigate that because the rules are coming off of the Streets and Highway Code for this, which if it's on a private property, I would not know how that could, you know, it's outside the norm. We'd have to investigate that and come back to you.
I appreciate that. And that was for sports fields?
Correct.
Right. So that probably wouldn't work. Yeah, and it's not on the map. But keep in mind, the lighting that we have is not the same as what you're seeing in other communities. So if we wanted to achieve parity, we would spend through the balance very quickly. So it's to maintain our existing lighting infrastructure. But the best way to deal with that from, I think Sean and I are on the same page, is we would approach it more globally and say for the entire town of Moraga to have the appropriate LED lighting and all of that. Reminds me of the neighborhood over in the country club that struggled with this issue. So we can tackle it globally, and then we look at what should the assessments be throughout the town for existing customers and then the new ones.
And then the last question along those lines, would there be any coordination with a consultant for the next item? Should that consultant be hired over the impact for recreation and other use that lighting may have? And a analysis of whether or not additional levies could be made from the existing authorization to fund those activities?
I think they're apples and oranges. If they're involved recreation or sports fields, that would be a separate mechanism. This is the traditional landscape and lighting district functions, which are typically streetlights or lighting along common walkways, pathways, and then the landscaping. Did I get that correct?
Yeah, and I think there is another item at the end of the meeting dealing with open space, public parks, and kind of a vision moving forward and how that could be funded, what the priorities are. And that would probably be a good place for something like that to park in.
Thank you.
Oh, very good.
All good?
Parking.
Thank you. All good? Ready for a motion? I move we confirm the engineer's report for assessment District nineteen seventy-nine dash one, Town of Moraga Street Lighting approving the assessments and assessment diagram and ordering the levy and collection of assessments for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays or abstentions? It is approved unanimously. We okay? Denise? Okay, good. Thank you. That moves us on to department reports. Nine A, and this is Parks and Recreation and Open Space Master Plan Agreement Award. Scott, is there a staff report?
You can just vote on it.
I move, I move, we do, no.
Mackenzie Brady, your Parks and Recreation Director, will approach the podium. Of course, she's right there. She'll deliver.
If you don't mind, I will do the presentation from here so I can.
So I was trying to make it easy for you.
Thank you. Good evening, Town Council. Mackenzie Brady, Parks and Recreation Director. And tonight I will be presenting to you the Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan Professional Services Agreement. And just so you all know, we have our consultant here with WRT, our proposed consultant with WRT. This is Peter Winch. And any questions at the end, he would be happy to help answer. So the requested action tonight is for the Town Council to adopt a resolution authorizing the Town Manager to execute this professional services agreement with WRT, that's Wallace, Roberts, and Todd, for an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand thirty-six dollars. And this would be for consulting services for the Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan. An additional fifteen percent project contingency in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars for a total contract not to exceed of three hundred and forty-five thousand thirty-six dollars, and for the Town Manager to execute this contract, these contract amendments if necessary. Then also a determination that this project is exempt, categorically exempt from CEQA. And why a Park Recreation and Open Space Master Plan? And it just so happens it spells PROs. I don't know if that's what's going to stick, but that's what it is right now. So why we're doing this master plan is a top-ten council goal priority, top council, Town Council top-ten priority. And this has been discussed as early as 2022, and it is currently on the docket for priority for this year. Additionally, aging infrastructure and shifting needs with the community, increase in community demand for parks and recreation services, and then a need for strategic community-informed planning so that we have direction for where we are going in the future. And for the consultant selection process, we issued an RFP, released an RFP in November of 2024, and it was due the end of January. Proposals were due the end of January of 2025. We went through an extensive selection process, three rounds of interviews, and used Parks and Recreation Commissioners and staff, including multiple department heads, to help select these consultants and narrowed it down to WRT. They were selected due to their inclusive engagement efforts, the knowledge of the local area, and our unique community, as well as Bay Area expertise. And then you can see here, the consultant teams, the lead is WRT, and they are known for park planning and design, and there are subconsultants that they put forth in the proposals. And the proposal is PROs Consulting, Recreation Operations Group Four, which does facilities, design, and cost modeling, ESA for ecological resources, and MAC Five for cost estimating. Additionally, there is NBS and Garvalia for additional augmentation if we wanted to add anything into that scope. And here are the highlights, the scope of services highlights. There, the proposal would include, and this cost would include GIS mapping and park facility inventorying. So that would be town-managed and partnered. So that would, could be Johnmere Land Trust, that could be St. Mary's College, could be elementary schools, high school, and other partners within La Mirinda. Facilities and programming analysis, that would include a gap analysis to see what we're needing in this community, what folks are wanting in the community, as well as an equity and access gap analysis. The public engagement would include a statistically valid survey, and I'll talk about that in a minute. There would also be cost estimates and funding strategy. So if the community came forth and determined that there was a specific place structure or opportunity that they wanted, how would we fund that? How much would it cost? And how would we get there? Additional staffing costs and anything of that nature. And then the final plan was an implementation guide, so how we're going to get to where we need to go. And for the community engagement, as I mentioned, a statistically valid survey, estimated about four hundred responses would make that statistically valid. There would be workshops, or a workshop and multiple pop-up events, that town staff would be trained in leading, and that is how we're able to keep this cost lower than initially proposed. This town staff would be taking a large role within this project. Also joint sessions with various committees, commissions, and the council. Some would be joint together, like Park and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, and Council in one session. Putting these sessions together and not having separate committees, commissions, or council is also helping to keep the cost low, lower. And then the part of the community engagement would also be an online presence. So online visibility and getting engagement on the web as well. And so the timeline, if this is approved tonight, we would do a kickoff very quickly here in this next month in July, and that would be a virtual kickoff. That is also another cost-saving measure instead of an in-person kickoff. And the engagement and assessment would take place over the fall, and then in the spring would be the process of writing the draft, and then hopefully final plan estimated November 2026. As I mentioned before, with the budget, the agreement is a not-to-exceed three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand and thirty-six dollars with a fifteen percent contingency in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars for a total not-to-exceed three hundred and forty-five thousand thirty-six dollars. And as Katie mentioned earlier, appropriations were recommended in the Palos Colorado Fund in this next year's budget. And as I mentioned, optional scope augmentations, there are a variety if the council is interested, for Quimby Impact Fee Review, expanded public engagement, so adding an additional public workshop. Instead of one, there could be two. Additional meetings with the commissions, committees, cultural and natural resource assessments, historic resource evaluation of the Hacienda property, and then asset management and CIP Capital Improvement Program updates. Excuse me. And as I mentioned, we are requesting authorization for CEQA to be deemed categorically exempt under Guideline Section 15306. That is basic data collection and planning only. So there will be no physical project. It would be research only. And the recommendation is for you all to adopt the resolution to execute the agreement with WRT in a not-to-exceed amount of three hundred thousand thirty-six dollars, approve a forty-five thousand dollar contingency, and authorize CEQA exemption. Open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Questions of staff? Down this way?
Sure. Thank you for the presentation. Mackenzie, just a couple of questions. If you could remind us, is it a sixteen-month timeline from end to end?
Yes.
Is that what you included on the slide? Okay, great. And you mentioned there were some optional costs, not inclusive in the three hundred thousand or the forty-five thousand dollar contingency. Do you have a rough understanding of what that might be if we do approach that?
Correct, yes. They are in the staff report.
Right.
If you happen to have it with you. Are you wanting to know the total additional cost?
Round numbers.
I had made a mistake in here and included something that was actually already included in the scope, but it'd be about a total of a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars extra for the additional scope.
Gotcha. Okay. And then around public engagement targeting for fall of 2025, anything that we can do to support you in getting the word out so that public engagement is as robust as we'd want it to be?
As of right now, if folks have seen another survey come around, please let them know to complete the survey from the town, one that is authorized by the town, and please to participate in any and all events and give their input because it matters.
Gotcha. And then you had mentioned there was one main community engagement event, and that there could be optional dollars spent to fund a second?
Correct.
Okay, got it. If a second one were to be determined necessary at some point in time, would that come from contingency? Or how would you see the dollars being appropriated?
It could come from contingency, yes. And that is in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and eighty dollars for an additional community workshop.
Gotcha. Sounds like a good value. Okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. No questions? Brian?
Okay. Just general questions on inclusion here. So I see that there is one area identified for historic resource evaluation. Is, did that come from the consultant or did that come from us?
Requesting that?
Yeah, or highlighting that as a resource here.
So there were specific items requested in the RFP, and I believe that that was, we threw everything at the wall to see what would be possible to have done. I don't remember exactly which section that that was in. Peter, do you happen to?
I actually think that was, thank you, by the way. I think that was.
Come on up.
Very good.
I might have to turn it on.
There we go. Now I see a red light.
That's good.
I see a red light. All's good. The historic resource evaluation was a suggestion by Don Merks from Group Four. They are on the team to do the facility analysis, and she suggested that, given the complexity potentially at Hacienda de las Flores, that it would be potentially relevant to look into the historic resource characteristics of that facility and the building and the grounds and the, I think, the outbuildings as well. So something we offered is an optional scope item that could just give us a stronger frame of reference for how to approach that property.
I would just point out that if that item gets added, I'll recuse from, I would want to recuse from that specific point, given my proximity to the Hacienda. I do, I'm interested to know whether or not your experts would also do an evaluation of other areas. For example, Moraga Ranch, they're currently in the implementation language the Planning Commission approved, had whenever development were to occur there, that there should be interpretive signage indicating the historic relevance of the Moraga Ranch location. Additionally, we have other buildings. I don't know what limit we want to do on that kind of evaluation. There's the movie theater across the street from us here, which was built by Donald Ream, one of the local establishments or developers of our town. I would just, if that is something that we were considering, I just would encourage it to be more expansive than just one property. The other question I have is, I don't remember what Quimby Act fees are. If you can elaborate on that a little bit more to know whether or not we want to evaluate them.
Yes, and I might have Sonia help me out with this here. But they are fees that the developer pays per, what is it here? Is it, is it three for every? So there should be three acre, I believe it's three acres, three acres per thousand individuals here of parkland. And there is a fee that we have set. I don't exactly know what it is, but that we receive for.
Recreation.
Yes, for recreation needs. And I believe it's per, is it per capita or is it per unit, per unit?
And do we, and the reason that we're highlighting this as a potential additional eleven thousand forty dollar augmentation is, when was the last time we actually evaluated our Quimby Act fees and to know whether or not it would be useful?
So it's, I believe it was just approved in the general plan to evaluate the Quimby, to evaluate the Quimby fees.
So is that, I'm looking, am I looking at the wrong page? I'm just looking through like a line item in the staff report that has the different options, I thought, or maybe I'm on the wrong page. Okay. So that, so this, so we've already done the Quimby Act assessment, or we still need to do one, and that could be done by them?
Katie Bruner, Administrative Services Director. The town last reviewed its in-lu parkland fee. Is that, that separately?
Separate.
Sorry. We did a development impact fee study in 2016. I would have to go back and look and see if that included the Quimby Act, but that's when we last looked at our developer fees overall and approved them.
Quimby Act only relates to subdivisions. So.
V is generally constrained to that subdivision. So the V is supposed to go to that subdivision except for in certain circumstances.
Unless there is not a neighborhood park and there's a community park that services that subdivision, correct?
Very limited circumstances.
So for example, if a subdivision were to be proposed within the Moraga Center, the developer of a subdivision there would be required to pay Quimby Act fees for establishment of recreation within that subdivision area?
And either provide parkland space based on the number of individuals or units that they have, or provide park and loo fees as well.
Got it. Thank you.
More questions?
Yes.
So I'm assuming that our, the WRT and team have done certain or similar projects in the area recently?
Yes. Would you like to provide any of your other projects?
Yeah, let me just introduce WRT a little bit. We're a planning and landscape architecture firm. We have an office in Philadelphia where we started back in the sixties, and in San Francisco where we've been established for many decades now. And we are often and always doing work in parks and open space. It's one of our primary practice areas. And we work in parks and open space from the system scale and a, you know, and a planning, the planning discipline. know, in a planning, the planning discipline, I'm wearing the planning hat, down to conceptual design and detailed design for construction of parks. So our Parks and Open Space Group includes planners and landscape architects, both. I think that informs, that creates good, good sort of learning back and forth between the disciplines. And yeah, we've been doing park system plans and our, we have park system plans ongoing in various communities in the Bay Area right now. Our team is working on plans in Foster City and Santa Clara.
Okay, and would you think that those are similar efforts?
Similar in structure, every community is unique.
Right.
But I think they have many components in common.
And how long are those documents?
How long are the documents? Typically, maybe about 100 to 150 pages.
I was just looking at the 309 hours committed to actually drafting the thing and it's a big number.
Well, there is, there's a lot of analysis that goes into it and sometimes, sometimes less is more in the final document, but there may be a lot, a lot behind that.
A few other scope things, you might want to stay there because I'm not sure Mackenzie will be able to answer it, but there's a section in there on sustainable, in the scope on sustainable management plan for parks?
So that was in the staff report, correct? Is that what you're looking at? When I had mentioned that I had made a mistake, that something that's already included in the proposal?
Okay.
That was that specific item?
So that's not my question though. Did we ask for that or is it just something that you thought we needed?
I believe that was in the RFP, so we were trying to be responsive to that.
Correct.
I think it's not a big number, but can you give me an example of what that would be?
You know, I think in, originally in our original proposal, that was among services offered by one of our subconsultant members, ESA. They do environmental planning and there, and you'll see still in the optional scope items, more of a review and an understanding of the sort of ecological context of the public open spaces in Maraga. That is, I think there's a nice synergy between that and the sustainability recommendations, but on their own, the sustainability recommendations I think still have a lot of value in helping the town understand how the parks and recreation system, which you know is, accounts for a fair amount of your public land and the public resources that you spend in terms of development and operations, what can be done to enhance the sustainability of those operations?
One example, can you give me one?
Low water use, irrigation and plantings.
Okay.
Would you like me to read that?
No, I just, I struggle with, do we need a consultant to tell us to turn the water down?
No, no we don't. Sorry, Peter. But I think a large part of why we brought this back was about the wildfire mitigation.
Okay. Let's see. Then there's quite a large budget devoted to prioritizing, identify and prioritize modifications to existing parks, facilities and open space and trails. Is that something we requested in the RFP or something that was just suggested?
More about proposed improvements.
Right.
So we did, when we brought this item, the impetus for this was a push for recreation fields like ball fields and there was a lot of support from the community and the council to push that direction. And ultimately it was, I think it was decided that we didn't have a park and recreation master plan that really identified that as a community need. So I think one of the hopes was that it would help to identify some of those things and places or locations that those activities could take place.
Did he capture what that section?
Yeah, I think that's really well put. It's an opportunity to look holistically at community needs and understand where to put limited resources to best serve the community and to begin to see what improvements can we make in the next 10 to 15 years.
There's a whole nother section though, the town's more like that. This, to me, when I read it, I envisioned your landscape architects looking at the layout of our parks and saying, what, what could we do better? And I'm just curious as to like, did we identify a problem that led to that or is this just a fun exploration?
There, I don't believe that there was any problem that led to it, it was just a matter of identifying any proposed improvements, making sure that we are in compliance with, well not compliance, but up to other, up to the standards that we need to be having here in this area. So looking at opportunities for development or acquisition of new spaces, adding additional facilities into our current parks, maybe it's a matter of, you know, removing the splash pad and putting something else in that location. So looking at what our community needs and wants and prioritizing those specific facilities within our current parks.
Okay, it just seemed like that was covered in another section. It's a big chunk of hours in this particular task. And it's, don't get me wrong, I think we absolutely need to do this because there's, we need consensus, everybody's got a different idea about what we should be doing in this area and you know, we're just talking in circles year after year after year. In terms of the optional tasks, to me, I think we should concentrate our efforts on sort of getting the bigger picture, that's a real drill down that we can handle elsewhere. I mean, it's, it's so detailed of an item. The only optional task that I have any interest in at all really at this point is the historic study, but I want to hear of the hacienda because I think that's critical, what we do with that. And I hope that this study gets us a long way towards helping us decide what to do with it in the long term. But depending on what the outcome of that decision is, I don't, we might not need it. So you know, you do a historic evaluation of that building, you get four consultants, you're going to go two and two on whether or not it's historic or not because you can argue it either way. So I would say maybe, but later, not now. And that's it. It is a lot of money, but I think we need to do it and I hope we can be really diligent about sticking to the budget.
Thank you, I have a, I have a number of questions. First of all, and I know this is going to sound trite, but how did we end up with a contract value of $300,036 as opposed to 300,000?
That's just the way the numbers fell.
Because Scott had a heart attack when he saw the first number.
Well, he was offended by the $36.
Let me, if I can just respond to that, it's based on, we have rates for every person, you know, every personnel has a rate and so that's how it.
You don't have a contingency in there?
We didn't have a contingency, so I think the addition of a contingency is very helpful.
Okay. But.
But the goal is to stay.
Round off using the contingency.
Yeah, the budget should have been 300,000, I own that. But the goal is to stay within 300,000 council, these are developer funds and ultimately with these developer funds, it's my perspective that we should be spending the money on recreational stuff, not just studies.
And right now we're doing just questions, right? Yeah.
Yep, sorry.
No, 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 I'm more reminding myself, Scott. Okay, GIS is not a lot of money in this, but it is a task to develop detailed GIS. And the question I have is, you know, we already have access to, you know, a couple of GIS databases or tools, plus we've got, you know, Google Earth. Is this to get in a specific detailed level of GIS for these facilities?
So we discussed that and they will have access to our GIS systems, which will also help to reduce the amount of time that is spent on this task. But we had also discussed that there, I believe that initially it was a GIS of every single individual park and recreation amenity, but we backed out of that, correct? So it's more the layering and using our current system. Do you have anything that you want to add to that? Peter?
Yeah, I think GIS can be thought of in a couple of ways. One, it has a couple of values. One is in being a resource for analysis, so understanding the amount of park acreage there is by type and by location, being able to, well then I'm going to shift over to the sort of geospatial aspect of that, which is being able to understand the distribution of amenities, both on town, both at town facilities, at schools, at potential partner sites. And then finally to be able to communicate to the community, to decision makers, to the public, maps are very helpful, so.
So I'm, what I think what I'm hearing is that it's going to be more detailed than the town GIS.
I would say that we would use the GIS system that the town provides, the data, and produce maps and undertake analysis using that data.
So are they going to be live or are they going to be like PDFs or fixed?
We would typically do fixed maps in the document, but I think we have the, no, we have the capacity to do online GIS and incorporate that into community engagement as well.
And so you won't be able to, for example, when I look at the GIS maps, you can't, you can't see through trees. And of course, you know, when you're down at that level of the park, that's significant piece of the park are the trees and I, then do you have a means to see through the trees?
It's, we wouldn't be mapping at that level of detail, yeah.
Okay.
My question is what, so do we have a menu of add-ons that could potentially be evaluated? I'm wondering whether or not we should take these one at a time to see whether or not there is a sense from the council on if we do decide to proceed, if there's an interest in including any of these?
Sorry, I didn't have my mic on. My question is whether or not we should take the individual add-ons one at a time to see what the interest is. I'm just looking through some of these and realizing I didn't ask a question like, I'll give you an example, the CIP updates, like I don't, I don't know.
I think we'll be fine without those.
Okay.
That and asset management, that's something that staff can manage.
Are there any of these add-ons that staff would recommend that we include?
The additional community engagement.
Okay.
I was looking at, asking questions about GIS, which is part, not an add-on, it's part of the scope. Okay, fine. Okay, so.
If I may, Mayor, on page three, the scope augmentation where it says inventory and geolocation of individual park features, that would be GIS. So that would be mapping out where each bench is, where each water fountain is, where each picnic table is, it's a much more detailed through the trees.
So there are two GIS tasks here? Because I looked on the cost sheet and there's like a $6,000.
We were trying to squeeze everything out that was not absolutely necessary. So yes, we pulled those out.
Okay, but right now we're asking questions, right?
Correct.
Contract basis, I just want to get confirmation, is this a cost plus contract or TNM? With a not to exceed?
TNM, yes, TNM not to exceed.
Okay.
Time materials.
The goal is to stay at $300,000.
Okay. And you know, the contract says it requires licenses that are required by law. And just from my own information, I'm not familiar with this type of expertise, is there a special license for this type of work?
No.
Okay.
I think that's your standard contract language, so.
And that would include like if you have a subcontractor who's an architect and that would need a license by the state, right? So it applies to the subcontractors. And typically that language would also apply to a business license, but the town doesn't have a business license requirement.
Well, if you're a engineering consultant, the engineering consultant must be a licensed engineer.
Correct.
That's the question I'm asking, the answer I'm getting back is, so we're really relying upon historical good support, successful projects that the firm has successfully delivered the goods. Okay. And then as more a contract thing, at the end there are attachments and, and they all say to be attached.
Yes, they, the ones that are not attached within the contract are actually attached as attachments in the staff report.
Yeah, they say exhibits, so this is the contractor, right?
It is the contract up until page 16.
And this is the town's standard professional services agreement template that has been revised based on requests from the contractor, the consultant.
Well, you know, like exhibits, it says compensation to be inserted, is that, so is that?
I just did not want to submit two of the same documents within the same packet.
Okay, but it's from the exhibit.
It would be, it would be attachment C.
That's what I'm asking for confirmation.
Yes, so exhibit C would actually be attachment C as well.
Okay. That concludes my questions. You have more questions?
May I just ask a brief follow-up? Is there anywhere in the GIS work where some enhancement of the GIS work would aid you in asset management?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So with the GIS work being able to identify specific park assets, is there a separate asset management system whereas some of the work, the GIS work performed could aid in supporting? Is there any value in the additional GIS work in alignment with asset management of parks and rec, I guess is my question.
Sean Knapp, your Public Works Director, I can give you an example of our storm drain system, which we have on GIS. So we actually located the materials or the, say a catch basin. We locate the catch basin, we determine what the size of the pipe is, we take pictures of it, we, you know, we have a location on a map, it's all GIS. All that information gets stored in the GIS, reports, inspections and things like that come along. It's all, it's a database, GIS basically, information database, and you can extract information, if you want to extract maps, inventory of materials, you could query and such. So in this example, you could basically map all of your facilities, you could have information on them, like this was built on this year, it was inspected at this date, it has a lifespan of this, you know, you add information to the GIS to help you keep track. Currently the asset replacement is on a spreadsheet, it's static and it doesn't have the ability to add a lot of data and it doesn't, it's not geographic in that you can show where a map is or a location and things like that. So when they have presentations and they're doing, they want to put up the pretty pictures, here's all the locations of all the different park facilities and this is what's in the park, if you zoom in, it would come out of a GIS map when they're trying to talk to the public or they have something on the screen or something like that. So they're trying to use this information to enhance the public outreach.
And Sean and I are working on transitioning to a new internal and external work order system that also has an asset management platform as well. So it would be able to store that data as well and I'd be curious to see how it might incorporate with GIS data points as well.
Gotcha, yeah, just be an interesting thing to explore if we can.
Be great.
Leverage the data to aid in the asset management, which informs planning, budgeting, et cetera. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question and then we'll, I guess go to a public comment. And that is just confirmation, has this been, contract been reviewed and approved? I don't see reference to that.
We typically review contracts before they come to council and yes, this has been reviewed and by our office, correct?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, reminder, any legal documents that are part of the staff report, it wouldn't be on your agenda if the town didn't review them.
Just confirming, thank you. Okay, we're through questions, any comments or questions from the public? I'm seeing no hands, so let's bring it back to the council for deliberations. Anyone want to make comments? I will. Go ahead, Brian, you go first. Go ahead, Brian, you go first.
So, I'm going to support the contract. I think it's a process we need to go through. I have been a part of processes similar to this, where we end up with a very thick book with lots of pretty pictures and great ideas that we, that that community cannot afford. And it creates more problems than it solves, because every, everybody's got a different idea about which ones their favorite, and they're constantly bugging the council, when are you going to get to that? And oftentimes, you get to very few. So, I hope it's a realistic, achievable plan. I hope we stay within budget, and I hope we can get consensus on what we can afford and what, what will improve the community. And my two, two things I hope that it will help us work on are what to do with the hacienda, and how are we going to spend the Palos Colorado fund? Two things that I think are really important that this process can help us with.
Carrie.
Carrie. Thank you. So, two years ago, when I first got on the council, this was one of the items that I highlighted and really strongly urged would get included in our priorities. And part of it was just my experience from being on the planning commission and seeing the public outcry for more recreation amenities. Specifically, in that case, it was for a sport-agnostic ball field, or, some of those folks would actually say specifically for baseball. Now that I have kids and nephews that participate in sports, I've been to many of the surrounding communities around here and seen exactly what amenities Moraga lacks. For one, I'll tell you, my nephew's team from El Cerrito got absolutely creamed in the Moraga, or in the, the Little League All-Stars game by Moraga. And El Cerrito has competitive ball fields, Moraga does not. Where do they play? They play at the JM Fields. These are not specifically fields that are identified for public use, although they were in a CIP item, I don't know if they're still there, as something that could be a mutually, a mutual investment for the community to put money into, so that we could also have a public ball field. At one point, I even went through a map of Moraga on Google Earth with the former town manager Cynthia Battenberg, who basically demonstrated for me that there are very few places available in Moraga where you could have such a field, again, though every community around us does have one. Also, if we were to have had a Moraga Recreation Master Plan, something like the Moraga Tennis Club coming available for purchase back in 2020 at 1161 Large Avenue that had multiple tennis courts and a pool, could have been something that would have been able to be acquired by the Town of Moraga, where instead, it got purchased for less than $2 million for 24 acres. I don't know who purchased it, but I presume it'll be something other than a recreation use. So, moving forward to last year, I think we were benefited by one of my former colleagues not being present when we voted for the, the priorities. And I was able to move to actually make it so that we explored putting out an RFP for a Recreation Master Plan. And it is because there is a public outcry for more recreation resources. I know I'm not, probably give some heartburn to some people at the dice here, but, for example, the hacienda, which is right next to my house, doesn't have a totlot. When I, my daughter, I took her over there, and I said, I'm going to take you to the park, she was disappointed that I took her to the hacienda, because it wasn't a park, it didn't have a totlot at it, even though it's one of the largest amenities that we have for that purpose in town. So, I think this is a critical need, it's one that is extraordinarily overdue. This is something which is beyond just parks. It's taking a look at potentially historic resources like the ones that I mentioned, which we already have identified for what is supposed to happen with them, like the Moraga Ranch, which is to be developed in a style similar to the original design with signs available to tell you what exactly it was. I would love this to be an action-oriented document that provides us with a very clear roadmap for things that we can implement. To the comments raised previously, it absolutely should be something that's realistic. We have a Palos Colorado fund. While it is not stipulated that those funds should, should be used primarily for recreation, that is why we got the funds, because Palos Colorado was supposed to be a golf course and a housing development, and they got blocked for natural resource issues, and were no longer able to put in the golf course. Consequently, we have the potential for millions of dollars sitting in our account for recreation purposes. I know there are other purposes, as the mayor will tell you, for roadway improvements for the development when it goes in, but recreation is definitely one of those. It's why we, why it's proposed that we're using those funds for this purpose. I love the timeline, which is 16 months, because that gives this council the opportunity to actually move on some of these critical projects that we really do need in town. You want to go hiking on a Moraga trail? We got plenty of them, but it's really hard to identify them, because they're basically mowed lawns. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to echo especially Brian's comments that, you know, we can, we can produce a thick report, and I can name some of those reports that sit in our files, even on, you know, some of the department webpages, that have been there for years and have never been implemented, one of them being the Climate Action Plan from 2014. And we don't want that. This has to be a realistic product that's achievable, but that doesn't mean there can't be stretch opportunities, because you're not gonna, this is not something for just one year and, and the current budget. So, that's a balancing act. With regard to GIS, I, I profess, I do not advocate for spending significant funds to produce static maps, because as soon as you produce static maps, they're going to change. So, that's, that's something that I, I give staff the responsibility to make sure that it's, it's well, resources well addressed. With regard to historical investigations, I'm going to, maybe I'll be out in the wilderness, but I, I don't advocate for that. And one of the reasons I don't advocate for that is that there isn't much in Moraga that's historical, to be honest. Not until they, they find the remnants of that Indian village from 1,000 years ago, you know. The hacienda, you know, if we, if we designate some of these structures to be historic, of historic significance, if that's where we, we end up, you might get, you might receive some grants, but you are going to be terribly restricted in what you can do with that structure. And, and especially the hacienda is a structure that was built in pieces, is not well logical. And, and so I am not interested, I do not advocate for doing studies that might result in that structure being designated of historic significance. So, beyond that, I'm, I'm a strong, I strongly support that we should do this, with my comments made, because I, you know, rec, I'm sorry, I've got to say, recreation is a very, very strong priority for the residents of Moraga for the whole range of ages. And we do make good use of the school fields and, and everything that is available to us, you can see that all weekends and after school, and now that it's summertime, and I live in Campolindo, that parking lot down at Soda Center, for example, is, is full all day with a variety of things going on, both, yes, for the aquatic center, but also for other activities that people can, can make use of. I'll leave it at that, so. Any other comments? Yes, Lisa?
I do support this professional services agreement for a master plan. It is clear that we have aging infrastructure, as the staff report notes. There is a great deal of community interest and demand for us to, to review and to operate under best practices to plan for the future. As has been stated here, I think that the plans should be quite actionable and realistic, given Moraga's lean budget and, and capabilities to provide amenities to the community. With respect to the hacienda, I don't know that we need an historical review of the hacienda. I am interested in, and it's been a longstanding question as to what do we do with the hacienda? I'd be interested in ideas with respect to that. I don't know whether, and there have been some studies on that, I don't know whether there should be a section of this to be, to be that, to study uses for the hacienda, recreational uses, and possibly other uses. Maybe that should be a function of an entirely separate study, so I'm not really sure about that. But perhaps a brief overview of what, what could be a recreation, further recreational opportunities for the hacienda.
Yeah, all excellent points. I would just say, just to go back to my point on public engagement, so, obviously, the contingency would be the discretion to you and your staff to, to use appropriately, but to the extent that you could just reserve as much as possible, so that we've got as much public education and engagement that comes out of this. We would look forward to seeing that included in the working and final product.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. So, are we?
Just real quick, Mr. Mayor. I agree on the comment on public engagement, and also, I believe that was an idea that was, when I asked the question earlier, that was raised by staff. In terms of, sorry.
Talking about agreeing with the point on public engagement, so, to our Park and Recreation Director, were we talking, I can see the need or the benefit in having an additional community workshop. The committee and commission briefings, I'm not so certain, are necessary, but if you don't have as much input as you can from the community on what they want, how do you know what to include? What was your recommendation there?
If I may, we reduced the number of commission and committee meetings by combining. So, initially, it was separate council meetings, separate planning commission meetings, separate Parks and Rec Commission meetings, but we joined them together, so if you are comfortable with, with that type of meeting, then, then we can keep it at that. If you would like to separate them, we could do that. And then a number of them, I believe, I believe presenting the, the draft was in person, and then the, the final was virtual. I think also, it would have, it had staff presenting to Art and Public Spaces Committee and Youth Involvement Committee. So, there was just a variety of, of ways we were trying to lower the costs.
I trust your judgment on that one, but in terms of the, the community workshop, I'm wondering whether or not we might benefit from having more than one community workshop to engage people? So, you have the survey, you have one workshop. If you weren't available for either one of those, we did a lot more work to be sure people were, they were heard on our general plan. I'm thinking that potentially, a public workshop, two public workshops could be necessary, unless I'm misunderstanding something.
Yes, and there will also be a number of community pop-ups at different locations, so.
Already, or if we?
Already.
Okay.
I believe it's 11 was what was scheduled? Okay, but, but WRT would train staff to be able to, to, to get information from the residents, like at a par and wine festival, or movie nights, or any of our other community events, or, you know, set up close to a, a school, or, or being able to target our, our senior population. So, just being able to, to be at specific locations.
Bottom line, though, recommended or not recommended to have an additional community workshop?
I believe it would, it would give us much more data, and it would be very important.
But also, didn't you say we could use contingency for that?
Yes. Are, are we discussing it coming out of contingency or adding on to the base?
Contingency.
Okay.
So, then we don't need to change anything about the potential motion, if it would come out of contingency? Okay, cool.
What Director Brady is saying is that she is recommending that it be the add-on, not come out of contingency. Is that correct?
I think it's fine to come out of contingency.
How much are we talking about?
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand?
Almost 10,000.
Yeah, okay.
Ask him.
Shh, we have $36 to play with.
So, the 300-whatever thousand dollars includes the contingency, correct? Or that's an addition?
That's an addition.
Got it.
Yeah. Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Is anyone ready, besides me?
Ready?
I, I authorize the town manager to execute a professional services agreement, or do you want to do it because you, you came up with the original idea?
Sure.
Read it here.
I got it, or is that?
No, it's here.
All right. I move to authorize the town manager to execute a professional services agreement with Wallace Roberts and Todd LLC, WRT, in the amount not to exceed 336, $300,036 to develop the park, recreation, and open space master plan, approving a contingency of $45,000, and determining the project to be exempt from CEQA.
Go ahead.
I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favors, please say aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? There are none. It passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you.
But we're not done yet. Okay. You hope. 9B, accessory dwelling unit accelerator program launch. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do.
All right, good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Cassius Karinding. I am the Assistant Planner with the Town's Plane Department, and I am here today to present the launch of our accessory dwelling unit, also known as ADU Accelerator Program, an incentive-based funding initiative aimed at encouraging ADU development in the Town of Moraga. So, here's a quick overview of the following sections I will be covering today, starting off with the recommendation to Town Council, discussion of the program's components, which includes context, application process, website updates, funding and program guidelines, and the consistency with our town's general plan, fiscal impact, and then finally, for next steps for implementation of the program. So, staff's recommendation and objective here is to inform the, the Town Council with an overview on the implementation of the ADU Accelerator Program. We're here to explain how the program supports town homeowners by offering financial incentives to facilitate and streamline the development of ADUs. After the presentation, staff will be here to assist with any questions or address any comments regarding the program. So, to start off with the background on the program, the California Budget Act of 2023 authorized $2.5 million in grant funding to cities in Contra Costa and Alameda counties to promote pre-approved, permit-ready ADU plans with a goal target of 350 ADUs to help address California's housing crisis. Several neighboring jurisdictions, which includes the City of Arinda and City of Walnut Creek and others, are also participating in the ADU Accelerator Program, demonstrating strong communal growth for ADUs behind this initiative. Former State Senator Steve Glaser of District 7 launched the ADU Accelerator Program, allocating funding to 15 East Bay cities, which, which provides rebates to homeowners building ADUs. The program is managed by California Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as HCD, and the Town of Danville acting as the fiscal agent for applications and funding distributions to jurisdictions who apply for the program. On April 29, 2025, Moraga was awarded $31,385.63 for this program, with funding being, being available to the general public from now until September 30, 2026, when the program concludes. concludes. So moving on to our application process, on the screen right now is a visual example of what our application process looks like for the town, with the first step being applicants submitting two applications, one for the standard ADU application and second for the ADU Accelerator Program. The second step includes the planning department reviewing materials and notifying applicants if they qualify or if any information is missing. The third step is obtaining a building permit. Once issuance of the building permit has been obtained through Contra Costa County's Building Division, a copy shall be provided for the town staff by the applicant. Fourth step is obtaining the certificate of occupancy. Once ADU has been fully this fully constructed and their certificate of occupancy has been received from the county, a documented copy of the certificate is required before rebate distribution. And the fifth and final step here is receiving the rebate. Rebates are issued as physical checks payable to the applicant. Moving on to our town's website update, staff has developed a new webpage under the planning section to keep the public informed about the program. The new webpage includes guidelines, rebate details, eligibility requirements, timelines, application instructions, and FAQs. Note that the available the available funding will be updated regularly to show the remaining balance to the public, and all program materials will be published after council's review of this agenda item today. Going into funding guidelines, so displayed on the screen currently is the town's rebate scale of how funds will be allocated to applicants with options based on ADU size and whether the units are either low-income deed restriction or non-restricted. The maximum amount for non-restricted ADUs is $7,500, and the maximum amount for low-income deed restricted ADUs is $15,000. The key point here is that applicants who opt in for the low-income restricted ADUs must commit to renting to low-income tenants for a minimum period of 20 years, and this will be enforced through a town regulatory agreement, which will be signed and notarized. This requirement ensures that ADUs remain affordable and is rented to qualified low-income tenants, increasing easier access to housing. Going into program guidelines, some notable things to consider with the program, rebates are first come, first served to the general public. Once funding runs out, no additional rebates will be issued until further notice. To ensure we support more affordable, smaller units, only ADUs under 1,000 square feet or less are eligible through this program. One thing to note here is that each single-family property, homeowner, and legal entity is limited to one rebate to efficiently maximize distribution of funds. The program is only available for proposal permanent ADUs with full utility connections. Temporary or incomplete structures are ineligible. And then finally, any type of mobile home or structure on wheels, which includes RVs or trailers, are not eligible for the program. So the ADU Accelerator Program will be consistent with the two elements in the town's general plan 2040. First, the program supports Housing Element Program Number 16, ADU Production, which aims to produce 48 new ADUs in high-resourced neighborhoods to enhance residential mobility and lower-density neighborhoods. Second, the program aligns with Community Design Element Policies CD-4.4, infill development, and single-family neighborhoods, which aims to facilitate, and where appropriate, streamlined improvement of Maraga's single-family housing stocks within established neighborhoods. Both elements in the general plan support and incentivize ADUs as a means to enhance the town's existing housing stock and overall meet long-term housing goals. Moving on to fiscal impact, note that the program has no direct fiscal impact on the town's budget. It is fully funded by HCD and administered through the town of Danville. Only minimal staff time is required to process and review applications. So finally, what the next steps for this program is that town staff will proceed with launching and promoting the ADU Accelerator Program through the town's website, social media, and local newsletters to reach out to the community. Applications will be received, evaluated, and rebates will be dispersed until the program's concluded. And finally, in compliance with the program's requirements, biannual progress reports of the rebates will be tracked and submitted to the town of Danville. Note, these reports are due every January 1 and July 1 until the program's completion in September 2026. And that'll be all for me today, and staff will be here to assist with any questions or comments.
I'll kick this one off. Why are we submitting the reports to Danville?
We're submitting the reports to Danville so they can see how much ADU rebates were being used and how many ADUs are being used for this program specifically. So we're just tracking the fundings for reports specifically.
And Danville has some?
Danville's the administrator.
Yes.
Okay.
Danville is the fiscal agent for the program.
And, you know, I commend staff's efforts in this, pursuing this funding, you know, it's $2.5 million total, we get, which in itself is is small, and the town's awarded 32, or 31,000 and change. But I have to ask the question, how how much time has staff spent on this, and how have you charged your hours, and and do we know whether, in fact, we've gonna spend that $31,000 on staff, understanding it'll never come back to us, but, you know, what's what is the, is there a payout on this? It's.
Well, some of the things we do are for the good of the community. We don't get reimbursed for our time. It's actually Senator Glazer before, it was his brainchild.
I understand.
Yeah, so it's cost of doing business, we're trying to promote more missing middle housing, and this is a tiny financial incentive, and if it works, great, if not, we try it. We do get the benefit of helping our revenue numbers and all that, so.
Right. No, I commend you. I I wish it were $3 million that we were gonna give.
Conversely, you would probably beat up on your staff if you found out we didn't apply or take advantage of the money.
I never beat up on our staff.
Metaphorically, sir.
Mayor? Barry, or Brian?
So I agree that it's tiny, and, you know, everyone I know who's built an ADU has spent $300,000. So if you get $5,000 back, I'm not sure that moves the needle, but it's still worth pursuing, I think. A question, though, if they go for the deed restriction, are they requiring that those units are are rented to somebody income-eligible?
Yes, so for the low.
And who's keeping track of that?
Yes, so for the low-income restricted ADUs, those are intended for rental to low-income tenants, and restricting the ADU to be rented just to those low-income households. And here, staff will be the ones that will be tracking those, and those are also going to be included in the biannual progress reports to the town of Danville.
Okay, so you get more if it's restricted, less if it's not.
Correct. Yeah.
If I may, Councilmember Dolan, the town already has to administer affordable housing units throughout town, so we have a process. It's not very complicated, it's pretty straightforward, just because we are a small jurisdiction, but we already have a process, so we would just lean on the same process there. And also, we're really not anticipating that many ADUs to resolve this, optimally two affordable housing deed-restricted units, but maybe more, and that's still not that much. We still have much more, so we have the capacity.
Carrie.
Thank you. So just some questions for clarification. So I've contemplated at one point an ADU, and I I agree with the comments of Councilmember Dolan that $1,000 or so wouldn't really make the difference if I was going to do this, but I know that the town, so I'm I'm kind of confused by some of the references in the staff report, and I just wanted, hoping you could clarify it for me. So I know the town of Danville has pre-approved ADU plans that are available for download on their website. For me, as somebody that might contemplate that or was contemplating that, that's a much more valuable thing than getting 1,000 bucks. So my question is, I see on our website, there's something that says pre-approved P-ADU plans. Is the intention from this program that a portion of the money be utilized for us to also develop pre-approved ADU plans?
I'm happy to answer that question. We are required to have a pre-approved ADU program from the state. It's actually very easy to comply with that requirement. One option is for a jurisdiction to hire a designer to prepare pre-approved ADU plans. Danville has a set, Walnut Creek, I believe, has a set, Martinez just released their set. We're getting mixed results from different jurisdictions, getting different feedback. The other alternative is to have a pre-approved ADU, a PDU process, where designers submit to us an application for a pre-approved ADU, they give us their site-agnostic design, we approve it, and then if someone were to, they can sell that design, and someone were to say, I want to use this design that was prepared by this architect that has already been approved by the town, we just have to make it available on our website, so we don't have to go out and hire a professional to do it. We just, we we advertise, make available the design.
So somebody does it, and they hire somebody to do it, and then we make it publicly available so that if I wanted to to copy the same plan, I wouldn't have to go out and get an architect?
You would get the architect, but the design is already pre-approved.
Got it. So I still have to pay the architect for something that's on the?
For their design, correct, as they're still their intellectual property. So you would still have to do that, and it's the alternative to having a jurisdiction spend a lot of money to hire a designer and come up with three designs and make those available. This program also, if, just one more thing, this program funding is also offered $50,000 to put towards that, but like you were saying, the cost of ADUs, it would be probably $100,000, $150,000 to hire an architect or a designer to come up with three previously-approved ADUs. So the more affordable economic thing for jurisdictions to do is to have this process available for an architect or other, there's three or four providers that I know of that fully focus and specialize with ADU plans. They submit to us to have us review those, and we approve them, and then those would be available, and they can sell those designs as well.
So I think you kind of answered my question, that it wouldn't make sense, we don't have an option to not provide the $1,000 and utilize that instead to come up with design plans?
It would be a different pot of money, which we did not pursue, just because it would, we would be on the hook for three-quarters of the cost.
Got it, thank you.
And so, having said that, at the end, Cassius' presentation included language about what happens if we have any remaining funds. At the end of the term, we would return those funds to the fiscal agent, and those go back in the pot, so to speak. And so if we were at that point interested in going back and getting some of that money and following through with that, a pre-approved ADU designs, and we could do that.
And just last on that, how well utilized, because this subsidy has been available for a while, how well utilized is the program currently?
For my conversations with the town of Danville as a fiscal agent, they're getting some interest. I mean, it's, even though it's, it maybe doesn't make a big dent, some money is is appreciated by folks, and again, the incentive is deed-restricted, smaller sizes, that's $15,000.
Thank you.
More questions? No more questions? Couple?
Brad, this is someone who has consulted and worked for a series of ADU companies, just have a couple things to to go over, if you don't mind. First, Cassius, thanks for the presentation. Briefly, on the, it's upwards of $7,500 for a rebate? Is that right, for 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 one applicant? Gotcha. And then that's regardless of the project valuation, correct? Gotcha. And then that gets paid out upon certificate of occupancy, final completion of the project, not, say, to offset building permit or planning department fees? Gotcha. Do we know offhand what an ADU fee for planning application is for town of Maraga?
Are you talking about when the ADU is submitted, like how much the fee is prior to that? So the the fee for the ADU is an $1,800 deposit?
Mm-hmm.
And then for later costs, if the ADU is over 750 square feet, it would be subject to development impact fees?
Gotcha. And then any insight, I know this is separate, but from, that's for the planning application, but for the building permit side with county?
County has their own set of.
County has their own set of fees?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. So, you know, as as other council members have mentioned, ADU costs can be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, so at least this could be looked at as some aspect of offsetting, even though you get, yet at the end of the project, at least it could look as if it could offset the, at least the application fees at the at the planning and building department level. On the the timeline standpoint, it was mentioned September 2026, so a project would need to complete by 2026 to receive funds?
That's right.
Yes, correct.
Gotcha, okay. So just, obviously, for the time to design something, permit something, do we know how fast we, as town of Maraga and county, approve ADU permits so that we can be as efficient as possible in aiding in potential applicants to ensure that they can get their project completed by 2026, given we're not in control of the construction schedule?
Yes, I can tell you about planning department side, so if the ADU is eligible to be streamlined, there is a less amount of requirements, so that creates more of a streamlined process for the ADUs versus like a standard ADU. So if the ADU has to go through standard requirements, it takes more of a timeframe for that on the planning's end, and it also is other set requirements before our full approval of the ADU, which we always recommend to kind of go through more of the streamlined route, per se, but yes.
And ADUs are approved ministerially, staff-level?
Yes, correct.
So that's as fast as it can go, right?
Yes, correct.
Gotcha. And then, just offhand, do we know how many ADU applications have come through last year, previous year?
From last year, I believe, estimated around six ADUs, and currently, right now, for this year, it's about five ADUs. So it's, yes, five ADUs as of now.
Gotcha. And any of those current ADUs, are they able to be a part of this program, or someone would have to submit, say, tomorrow, or within a week's time?
So, yeah, so those ADUs actually have been going through the building permit process, so so I'm not too sure, but I believe they do not.
So no retroactive, I guess, is what I'm asking. So it'd be someone would need to learn of this program, submit, and then hopefully complete their project by September 2026?
Yes, correct.
Gotcha. And if, offhand, we get five, six, eight, and we have $31,000 allowed for it, upwards of $7,500 max, that covers about four projects?
Yeah, so you could say like two deed-restricted ADUs.
Right.
That's like $15,000 each, that's two projects. If it were to be less, like the non-restricted ADUs, it could be potential up to four projects.
Gotcha. Yeah, and I'd love to, don't have to do it at this point in time, but I'd love to explore the conversations you guys may have already had or want to have with various ADU providers about having templated plans at the ready. So don't need to get into it now, but thank you.
Thank you, Graham. Unless there, are there any public comments, questions? See no hands? So in this particular case, this is a informational report on next steps. Unless directed otherwise, staff will proceed with launching the ADU Accelerator Program after June 25 tonight, and once implemented, the staff will continue to promote the program. So we're not making a decision tonight, it's.
Not in file.
Are we all shaking our heads?
Yeah.
Thumbs up? I think we've completed this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, boy, it'd be great if we had far more than just five or six ADUs per year.
So Mr. Mayor, members of council, this was Cassius' first presentation, so nice job.
Good job.
Very nice.
Very, very good.
Thank you.
Yeah. Should we do? We can clap. That takes us to item number 11, which is informational items. Are there any informational items to address tonight?
Mayor, we missed item 10. Councilmember requests for future agenda items.
My 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 paperclip was in the way. Sorry. Item 10, thank you for catching that, though. Are there any requests for future agenda items? This is last chance before this recess. So now informational items, which you already addressed that. Town Manager Scott, would you follow up on?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff will follow up, as we talked about earlier in the agenda. The next council meeting, oh, remember, July 4? Okay, the next council meeting will be on July 9, a special meeting, town manager review. The next regular meeting will be on August 27. We have a variety of items that we're working on, one of which will be the legislative platform and the Tri-Cities contract with Townsend. So I'm waiting on the other two, but we'll we'll be ready. I also wanted to make sure we got through the budget okay, because funding is in the budget for that. If needed, council, we could have meetings on July 23 or August 13, if needed, and if you are all available, but otherwise, the next regular meeting will be on August 27. Thank you, council. Thank you, council.
I hereby announce our adjournment of this meeting. It's adjourned. I announced it.